All right, we'll get started here. Welcome everybody here to our media. We'll start out with Pledge of Allegiance called by prayer by please stand and.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful for this evening, grateful for this time that we have as friends and fellow school board members and administrators here in this school district. We're grateful for the health that we were able to have to be here. We're grateful for all the teachers and the students again that that come to our schools and that we associate with and the friendships that we have. We pray for those that may be sick or afflicted or have any other ailments. Please watch over them and help us to be aware of those things and those needs so that we may be able to be assistants. We ask you to please bless and direct this meeting that we may follow thy will and thy counsel. We may do those things which will help this school district to go in the direction which will be best for the kids in this area. We ask you to bless us in the decisions and in the discussion. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Future board meetings, February 27th, March 12th, March 26th, all six o'clock here at the administration building. Revision to the agenda, there's a few things and one thing in the HR, that's about it, I think. Recognition.
All right, so we have a couple of things here, but first of all, it's always fun to speak about and for our teacher and staff of the year, so I'm gonna have Mrs. Dieter come forward to start with. This is the fun part of the meeting where we do get to recognize our people. So, Mrs. Dieter, during the 2022-2023 school year, you were nominated by your staff to be the Teacher of the Year. And I know that when we talked about maybe moving on to the District Teacher of the Year, that you had a lot of things going on. You were teaching summer school and teaching summer school, she was doing I-read, so one of her focuses was to help those students pass. Does a great job with that. Also, you're an adjunct teacher or a professor with
Indiana Wesleyan.
Indiana Wesleyan, and so very, very busy. So she did not move on to try to be the District Teacher of the Year, probably could have. But she wanted to make sure that she focused on the teaching that she does to help the students that we have and also future teachers because we certainly need that. So I very much, and if you remember, very much respected that because that was a great situation with that. But then on behalf of MSD Walrus County, we do have a staff spotlight Teacher of the Year for Southwood Elementary. This is a $50 voucher for the online store, and so that's yours. And that is one of those things that First Farmers Banking Trust helped sponsor, so we want to thank you for all of that. So let's give her a round of applause. And so I also always give the principal an opportunity to say whatever he wants to say about you.
Yeah. There's not much to say about Mrs. Dieter now. I'm just kidding. Mrs. Dieter is the epitome of what you want as a school employee. She has so much compassion for her students. I think everybody in our building would say she always comes in with a smile on her face and always gives 110% to her students, and she's always there. Your I-read is a big thing for her. She makes sure every one of her kids is gonna pass that test, and she reaches out, gives the extra work that you need to. But all the kids that she touches every day, they know that she loves each and every one of them with all her heart. She puts the kids first, and I don't know if there's a better person in our building that shows that, leads by example. She is super humble. She hates this right now, but she does deserve this spotlight. I'm very proud of her.
Thank you.
And you did have the opportunity to say anything, but I heard that you didn't want to say anything?
No, thank you. Thank you very much. I do love my job.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Mrs. Adams, if you can come up here. So now you know how that's done.
I'm just gonna say it's my wife.
Yeah, that's what she did. So the Staff of the Year, Mrs. Adams, has done different things at Southwood Elementary, but currently paraprofessional. Helps a lot with some students and very loyal to the school, a great neighbor too by me, so anyways. Did East, right? But anyway, Staff of the Year, so we really appreciate all that you do. And I want to congratulate you, and you also get a $50. I'm gonna shake your hand, so give her a round of applause. And Mr. Stocker, don't leave him yet.
Okay, I'll be there. Mrs. Adams is a great, she's a quiet leader. You won't hear her say a little light at school, but everybody knows that she is there for the kids. She's in the Challenger Room, she's in our Rides Room, and really does a phenomenal job with those students. There's a lot of people would not, would burn out that position. She comes in with a smile on her face every day. We couldn't ask for a better person. This was a blowout for the votes when it came to her peers voting on her, that she got this position because they know the work that she does, what she does for our students, so we appreciate her. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And like we always say, you're welcome to stay, but you also can leave if you like. Everybody's usually pretty busy. So we won't be offending you, because that's typically what happens, that you can do whatever you want.
Something better. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I have some other things. Yep, I have a few other things here, so we'll go ahead and go with those. So first of all, from Northfield, from Mr. Snyder, exemplary behavior report was filed by official Thomas Newhart on behalf of head boys basketball coach Rex Reimer. This was following the game on Thursday, February 1st against Manchester. That was at Northfield. Mr. Newhart stated, "I would like to give kudos to head coach Rex Reimer of Northwood High School during the contest on Thursday night when they were getting beat. He never said one negative word to the officials and coached his kids hard. They gave 110% the whole game and also had excellent sportsmanship." A lot of times during these lopsided games, it's easy for the players or coaches to get frustrated at the officials, but this wasn't the case last night. Coach Reimer does an outstanding job with his kids. So great to hear that, and that is certainly true what that official said. And it's lopsided and you just get frustrated, and sometimes you may try to help the officials. Next one comes from Mr. Snyder also. Huntington University held their high school art reception Friday, February 2nd. Mayne Napear was awarded honorable mention, and Lane Denton was awarded honorable mention in second place overall, so congratulations to them. Also from Northfield, seventh grade robotics team, John Young, Patrick Nestler, Chase Ross. On the entire robotics competition in Crown Point on Saturday, February 3rd, this earned them a state bid, so congratulations to them. At Southwood, Mrs. Lewis said, "An exemplary behavior report was filed by official Darren Haas on behalf of the Southwood Boys Basketball Team for the January 26th contest at North Miami. Mr. Haas stated, 'The Southwood Boys Basketball Team played very well and showed good sportsmanship while having a lot of fun during the game tonight. The kids played, and the coaches coached their kids. The fans cheered for their team. Thank you for setting a good example of what high school sports are all about. Good luck to your team as you continue the season.'" You know, wins and losses, wins are always fun, but having those exemplary behavior reports is very good, and that shows the character of our coaches and also our players. So we continue on. I have one more from Mrs. Lewis at Southwood. Congratulations to all Southwood Band of Members who received gold ratings at the 2024 Soul and Ensemble Instrumental Contest held at Eastbrook High School, January 27th. Ethan Lockard also qualified for state for getting a gold on his Group One chinner saxophone entry. He will perform at the state contest at North Central High School on Saturday, February 24th. Students receiving gold ratings were Alexis Eberle, Alexis Rish, Lake Smith, Kaylee Nelson, Aubrey Carey, Rachel Lawson, Kenzie Mormon, Bailey Mahan, Remy Rigney, Cameron Johnson, Dylan Cochran, Olivia Simpson, and Ethan Lockard. So again, want to congratulate all them and thank the principals for sharing those good things that are happening there at the high schools. So I believe that's all I have for recognition. My iPad was updated, and so it's kind of weird because you can see, I don't see anything right now, but it shows that there.
It's up there.
It's up there, but then if I slide down, there we go. Okay.
So I'm curious, do the students and the coaches and all that, do they get to hear this? Do the principals share these?
The coaches get it. It goes to the A and the coaches get it as well, they should.
I just have no big tips.
And what I do is, we do different things on this, but sometimes we don't read all the names, but when you guys leave and after these meetings, Mrs. Langy Bartles, I used to do it before Mrs. Langy Bartles, but she will put all this together. I will send this to the newspapers and radio stations, but then also record. And then I know WKUZ, I think they record, they do it all at once, but then I think My Bash, they take little snippets and put them on at different times. So that doesn't mean anybody listens, watches, or listens to the students, listens to radios, but it does go on the radio. But not all of it, like not all the names are necessarily read, so, because if we go on and on and on, people don't necessarily listen all the time.
All right, public comment on Jim Higginson's only. All right, thank you. Approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting on January 23rd and the Board of Planets meeting on January 23rd. We get those at the same time. Motion of second?
Sure.
No move, no vote for those. Second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? All right. Uh, claims. Do I have any questions on the claims? Payroll. All right, go.
Darktrace.
Yes. Okay, I was gonna ask that too, so I just.
So that's a cybersecurity software program that we use. This is the third year of it. And actually, we'll be piloting a program through the IDOE next year. And so for a couple of years, then at least, we won't have that expense, but at some point, depending on what the pilot does, I'm sure that expense will come back in some capacity. Obviously, cybersecurity is a big deal. And so that just helps us with controlling and managing. Darktrace, this is our third year, aren't we?
And that's for all the members.
For the district.
Any other questions on claims or? Motion of second?
No move.
Second. All those that are in favor of claims, aye.
Aye.
You opposed? All right. Payroll.
Nothing out of the ordinary for payroll. The next one in February, we'll start, we've started receiving coaches pay for the winter season. So we'll see a little bit of increase in February overall, plus we did the early literacy grant stipends that you guys approved last time. That will be in the next, the February 15th payroll, which is in this current one. So you'll see a little bit higher payroll because of those things.
Payroll?
Let's look at that.
All those in favor of payroll, say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Right. Financial summary.
I believe I gave you the end of the month stuff.
It's up there.
So just kind of the first look at end of the month balances for January. We will look at the next board meeting, then for cash flow, and kind of look at those first early projections come January throughout the year, but nothing out of the ordinary with any of those ending balances.
All right. Any questions there? All right, personnel. How do we go with this? Who else? Don't get bored.
Lot of coaches.
Spring sports. We have a couple resignations. Jennifer Nestler has a paraprofessional at Metro North. Rita Scholes has a cook at Northville High School. Her employment. McCana Waymar has an English teacher at Southwood High School. Torrance Leaks has a custodian at Metro North Elementary. Thomas Turey, teacher and football coach at Southwood High School.
Can just notice that's revised, that he will be beginning on with your vote next Tuesday. So, but sorry, just wanted to make sure you saw that for sure.
And then we also have Mary Turner as a custodian at Southwood Elementary. We have one lead, number 172, which begins, well, it's already began then, January 29th. Retirement. We have Dan Snyder as a teacher at Southwood High School. I think this is the second time.
Second time.
Make it official maybe. And then Deborah Schinkel, a teacher at Shark Creek Elementary at the end of the school year. And Sandra Gutsweiler as a teacher at Southwood High School. Do you want to comment?
I'll do those, or wait until after we vote?
See if you vote.
Did that work well? We probably shouldn't, but it'd be hard to replace a few of them. Transfer Brett Wim, Wim as a custodian transferring from Metro North to Shark Creek, February 19th. And Jordan Boyer transferring from business teacher to STEM teacher at Southwood High School, back to the next school year. All right, Southwood's spring coaches, not trying to school. We have Corey Blocker at the head coach, Danny Lloyd as assistant head coach at baseball, Kyle Zerpus as assistant baseball, and Dustin Rutledge in assistant baseball coach. And Christian Dieter has a volunteer baseball coach. And Miles Scott as assistant baseball coach, and Sam Cole as a volunteer baseball coach. It's old baseball. AI Sankeyo has a head tennis. Gary Dale has a head golf. Devon Dale has assistant golf. And Devon Dale is the high school, or junior high golf. Jody Dale is a volunteer assistant golf. Conia Boone, head track. Gary Hamel, assistant track. Chad Andrews, assistant track. Jeff Hobson, assistant track. Natalie Under, assistant track. Gina Deaton, assistant track. Carl Pace, head softball. Gary Marion, assistant softball. Chad Lambert, assistant softball. And Kristen McCourt, assistant softball. And that's all of Southwood, on to Northville. Heather Hyden, head track. Larry Vaughn, assistant track. Dick Lemming, assistant track, and Trisha Oswald as assistant track. Michelle Rice, head junior high track. Sarah Aderman, junior high assistant track. Kyle Aderman, volunteer track. Hannah Rubaker, volunteer track. And Joseph Mitchell, head baseball. Stan Cox, assistant baseball. Remington Monz, assistant baseball. Nate Henry, assistant baseball. Brandon Riplinger, assistant baseball. Tiffany Stiff, head softball. Jeff Campus, campus, assistant softball. Joe Waldman?
Vaughn.
Vaughn? Assistant softball. Abby Mitchell, volunteer softball. Marion Mylan, head tennis. Casey Dyson, assistant tennis. Colin Dawes, head boys golf. Trey Cole, assistant boys golf. Anthony Sore, junior high boys golf. Jordan Ekman, softball. Micah Higgins, assistant baseball, and Sam Burkhoff, assistant baseball. Can I get a motion for, motion of second for HR? So the all those in favor of HR, say aye.
Aye.
Are any opposed?
All right. If I can speak to our teacher retirements, just to give you some statistics here. First of all, Deb Schinkel, all of her years have been at MSD. I don't know if you want to guess how many years. About 48 years, and that includes this year, so 48 years. Sandy Gutsweiler, all at MSD, and she, 40 years. Dan Snyder, 34 and a half years total, 17 years at Cherabusco and 17 and a half years at MSD. So many, many years of experience that we're losing, and but we do very, very much appreciate their service to MSD over all of those years. So we're gonna have somebody new on the top of this next year as far as numbers of years experienced because Deb has been there for a while as far as in the teaching rank, and so we'll have somebody else new on the top of that list. A lot of years, 48, 40, and 17 and a half MSD per year. So I want to thank them very much for their service to MSD and all the students.
Appreciate that. Hartland Career Center.
We haven't had a meeting since then, but we did meet with the superintendent in the lifting project, or different group, you might address that a little bit.
Yeah, a different way of doing it, there's a gentleman that actually is from Cherabusco. Actually, good friends with, was a player for Dan Snyder, actually, I learned that about him. But the company that he works for, he's not an architect, but he's actually works for the manufacturing company. And right now, since you brought that to my attention, I don't know that name right off the hand, but it's a
I can't figure it out.
Yeah, I know, there you go. Yeah, there you go. But it's a company that's been in business for many, 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 many years. And so they do it a little bit differently, and kind of just waiting on what the board of managers kind of decides to, and putting it back on them. Because they're the ones that makes the final decisions on if they're gonna do something like that. But if they would do that, basically, they would hire an architect, and it could be like, we have teachers of record. So the teachers of record, they have a licensure, but they may not necessarily be the teacher of service. They may not be teaching that particular student. So they also have like architects of records. So in other words, somebody that would charge a lot less than a normal architect. But then the person that does all the work would be the gentleman that actually came and presented to us. So just a different way of doing it. One thing, probably need to vet a little bit more to see if they would do it. I think it may not be necessarily less expensive to go that route, but one way of doing it is, like for example, if you wanted to do a metal roof, which he kind of says would almost last forever. Forever, one time I learned about that, it could only be seven years, but anyway. Forever, maybe more than seven years there with a metal roof, but maybe putting more money in the actual materials instead of all the other soft costs, so. But we don't know that yet, and we don't know, so anyway, thanks for putting us on the spot, Mr. Driscoll.
No problem. And because of the metal, because that does have a pitch roof over there, and that is, it'd make it work a lot better accordingly.
And it's way overdue, and it's not as, they actually did a little boring there to find out what was, and it's even worse maybe than what they thought. So it's been going a long time, it's way past due, so the difficult part is, there's five different school corporations with five different situations going on financially, and to get everybody to agree, not necessarily to agree, everybody agrees it needs to be done, but how are they gonna, how are they gonna pay for it? So that's, that's gonna be the big thing, and glad that Mr. Driscoll is the president that can get that all worked out with the other board members, so.
Trust in you.
Yeah, it'll be a lot.
Superintendent report.
Yeah, I just have a few things. Just a locker room progress. I know I took a picture of the concrete, which is not that exciting, but yet there was a lot of work done to get to that point, so they did that at Southwood on Friday. And then of course, next Monday, it'll be done at Northfield, so that means that some other more exciting things will happen because then some of the new construction will happen after that, so some move, that goes along. I just wanted to share a little bit of information about legislation, some statistics. Sometimes we hear that there's not gonna be any controversy in the short session this year with education, but overall, there were actually 297 Senate bills that were introduced, 110 of them passed for a pass rate of 37%. Remember, I have all these guys, we'll give them tests later. 442 House bills were introduced, 111 of them passed with a pass rate of 25%. Now, for education, there are 71 education bills. I think there's something going on with attorneys and the legislators, because you know, whenever, whenever you have these bills.
Close threat.
I looked, I looked right at you, so I had to say that. I don't know, I didn't really think about saying that earlier. But anyway, every time we have a bill and we have new things to do, that means we just have to figure out what, how that all works. And I'm glad we have people that can help us do that. Thank you, Josh.
Yeah, I feel loved.
Priority bill, if you know, you probably know this, but Senate bills like number one, those are priority bills. The lower the number, the better the priority, and that requires the I-read. A lot of that's the I-read, a lot of it talks about being held back, but they're not necessarily saying it's about holding students back, but maybe more remediation. And then priority number one for the House is House Bill 1001, and it does some different things that won't affect us a lot. But there's other bills like House Bill 1073. If there's available funding, whatever that means, available funding is actually the bill right now, that we would be then putting electronic recording equipment in each designated life skills classrooms, exclusion areas, or timeout areas. So it's kind of interesting. And the reason why some bills are happening like that is because there was a bad situation at school. One situation, and with that situation, now we have to have a bill, and now we may have to do some of these things. But the big question is available funding, whatever that means. Also, there's Senate Bill 282 talks about absenteeism in school attendance, so there's information about that. We know that our attendance rates since COVID has gone down. We are not, and you know, we are lower than what we've been, but not that much. But yet we still want it to be higher, so our goal would be to actually improve that. We have had meetings with our administrators, even with the juvenile prosecutor, deputy prosecuting attorney, probation officer, to see how we can work together to try to better help some of the situations that we need help with. And that's about it as far as some legislation. I do want to tell you that our February student count, the ADM, is always a very important time. So for February 1st, 2024, our ADM is up 34 students from last fall, so we're at 2186. Now, it won't show 2186 when we sit at the DOE because we have some dual enrollment, so it'll say something like 2184.38 or something like that. I don't have it memorized, but the .38 is kind of a short person like me, that's a lot skinnier though, so. But anyway, 2186, that's how many students that we have. That does not include the pre-K, so I looked that back up. In the pre-K, we have 150, 30 students that we do not get funding through the state of Indiana unless they do have an IEP. And so 63 at Southwood Elementary and 90 at Metro North Elementary, so a grand total of the number of students that we have, 2,339. So just good information, keep us going, and appreciate all the principals and everybody that's working with the students and the additional students that we have. So I think that's all I had.
What did they want to do behind read?
So number one, I-read, right now, they probably will mandate that all students will take second, they will take them as second graders. We are piloting that in one of our schools this year. There are, how many, Mr. Stocker, how many were schools so far?
There's over 900 that signed up this year. 700 and something took it last year as second grade, and over 900 are signing up to take it this year.
And so we're having one of our, doing, one of our schools doing that this year. It may be mandated from now on, but what's gonna happen is they're gonna possibly, they were looking at trying to make more of it mandated that they are retained in third grade, but that has been talked about as not necessarily the best way of doing it. It would be more about remediation and possibly, if all students take it in second grade, of course, if they take it in second grade and pass, they would not have to take it again in third grade. But if they don't pass it, that would give them more of an edge to know which students really need that extra boost as they take it again in third grade. So that would be one thing that they would be doing.
They'll learn to retest in summer after third grade.
Correct, correct, correct. And they actually can take it. And they actually can take it also in fourth grade.
Yeah, until they pass, yeah.
Until.
Until they pass, well, even eighth, fifth grade too, if they have an IEP.
Traditionally, our, our pass rate's been very, very good. You know, we've, we've had a little slippage too, but it could depend on the students that we have. It also depends on some of the COVID situations that have happened. The state of Indiana is, their goal is that the state of Indiana, everybody's at ninety-five percent. In two thousand, now, what's that one, twenty twenty-seven is that? Remember what's that one? Yeah, twenty twenty-seven. So trying to push a lot. They're doing some extra things this year too. It's always been a time test, although I think most of our principals and our teachers would say that most of the students in third grade did not need necessarily extra time. But this year, it's untimed. So they can spend days on doing it if they like, I guess.
We just found this out like last week, so it's a good deal.
Yeah, yeah. So.
So I mean, they could take days?
Well, I joked about that a little bit. I'm just saying this because I'm, yeah. No, it won't take days, but they may take extra time. And that actually will, it's good and bad because it's hard to schedule that way. Because you know, if you schedule it and then they go and it's lunchtime or whatever, then it's going to be interesting. But that's something that's similar to other testing that we've had. Not necessarily typically the high stakes tests are not, are not unlimited in time, but this one is. They have assured us that that will not change anything as far as the comparison data. I don't really understand that for sure because if you have a time limit, you would think that possibly it would be, I mean, if you don't have a time limit, you could do better. So I don't know how you really, you know, compare that, but that's fine. Get into us and that's where we're going.
All right, they're going to the ballet.
Did we make you mad or something?
They're going to something more fun.
A ballet? This is a lot of fun.
All right, new business.
Okay, yeah, but I would like to, before you go on to all that, this isn't part of the superintendent report, but just like to share some information. Dr. Kuhn's going to share some information also, but since we're talking about these projects and about all the legalities that we have to follow, kind of wanted to share some other information for our public, all of you know, because you've been a part of this. But when we have, we talk about this bonding process that we're, we're doing some other official resolutions. Want to go back to the work sessions that we did, all right? So we had work sessions. Our first one, we started talking about this was January seventeenth of twenty twenty-three. We had another work session, April tenth of twenty twenty-three, and then another one on August eighth of twenty twenty-three. And just a reminder, if you recall, not that this is a good face necessarily on mine, but yet we are on Facebook Live. These are all recorded. They actually go then to YouTube, so they're all out there in the archives, so you can see them. But just want people to know that we do, we have these open discussions about all the things that we, we've been talking about. We then had our regular school board meetings on August twenty-second of twenty twenty-three. Sharp Creek, when we talked about those three different options, that decision was made at that point. And then the bond hearings, we had two bond hearings. The legal parts of that was September twelfth of twenty twenty-three and September twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-three. So again, all six of those meetings, including all the other meetings in between, are, have been meetings held in public. They're not public meetings, but meetings held in public. Plus, they all have been recorded and on Facebook Live and also YouTube also. So just want to make sure that we kind of go over that again because there's a lot of discussions and talk and people just want to know. And so those are the things that we've done. And then Dr. Kuhn is going to kind of give us some history about lease bonds.
Sure, yeah.
Interesting data that he found.
Yeah, so I'm not a bond expert, but I can speak from just some of my experience on these bonds. There, there's typically two type of bond processes that school corporations can go through to borrow money. One of that's through the, what they call a geo general obligation bond. And the other one is through a lease rental building corporation bond, essentially. With the geo bond, each district has what they call a bonding capacity of a limited amount of money that they can borrow. I think our geo bond capacity is around four million dollars. And so once you borrow that, then you pay that back, and you have no more capacity until you pay that back. Anything above that, schools typically do what they call a lease bond financing through a multi-school building corporation. And from a historical purpose, just last year, twenty twenty-three, we did a lease bonding for these locker room renovation projects and some of the other smaller projects that we did. So that is nothing new to this corporation or any other school corporation across the state of Indiana. I went back into our files a little bit just because I wanted to see this more from a historical perspective. The earliest lease bond that I could find was from nineteen seventy-nine. And so I kind of went through and I tried to count up. Since nineteen seventy-nine, the school corporation has done one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven lease bond processes for building projects or whatever they had going on at that, at that time. The resolutions that we're asking for approval tonight is a continuation of what we started for the twenty twenty-four bond for the Northfield Elementary project of bringing Sharp Creek over and adding on space to Northfield High School. A lot of that process was done, like Mr. Kuhn ever said, in the fall. This is just a continuation of that because we're getting to that point where we're going to start looking at when we want to start financing and borrowing that money. And so to do that, then, a lot of these requests then are related more to that building corporation lease project to allow us to borrow those monies. And so on the new business, we have three resolutions to approve in relation to that. The first resolution, uh, resolution, excuse me, which we could call Exhibit A, is the resolution determining need for the project. And so as required by the school leasing statute, Indiana Code twenty dash forty-seven dash three, the board must make a determination by resolution that there is a need for the project. Resil- Exhibit B is resolution approving the form of lease. The school corporation is funding this project through a lease financing as it has done with other past construction renovation projects. Lease financing are used by school corporations across Indiana in order to borrow for renovation and construction. This type of financing does not count against the school corporation's constitutional debt allowance. The building corporation will purchase a portion of the Northfield Junior Senior High School campus at the closing for at least the appraisal value. The building corporation will then lease the real estate back to the school corporation. The lease rental due from the school corporation will be paid from property taxes. The lease rental, as shown as a maximum amount in the lease, will be sufficient to pay the principal and interest due to the bond holders. And then Exhibit C, which is the third resolution, is the resolution reapproving the building corporation. In order for the building corporation, a not-for-profit Indiana corporation to issue tax-exempt bonds, the IRS requires that the school board approve the building corporation and authorize it to issue taxes and bonds on behalf of the school corporation. We already have a building corporation, so this is just reapproving that building corporation. So those are the three resolutions. Josh, I don't know if you have anything in reference that you want to speak upon on those.
Nothing to add, it's a pretty good summary. But I mean, if that leads to any other questions, I'm happy to help answer questions.
All right, immediate recommendation to approve the resolution Exhibit A.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation for resolution determining need.
I second your argument.
Got a motion in second. All the favor of Exhibit A, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes. Recommendation to approve, approving form of lease Exhibit B. So.
Second.
Got a motion in second. For Exhibit B, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And the recommendation, recommendation to approve, resolution reapproving, approving Building Corporation Exhibit C. Motion in second. Someone?
Aye.
Got a motion in a second for Exhibit C. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes.
So there will be a few more advertisements that will go out and a few more postings at some of our building locations. And then I believe March twelfth is when that hearing will be.
All right, move on. We have a recommendation to approve a twenty twenty-four secondary summer school offerings.
Yes, last board meeting, Mrs. Moore presented on the elementary summer school course offerings. This is for the secondary high school level course descriptions. Similar to what we've done in the past, we will provide a driver's education option. We will have two virtual options that students can choose for depending on their need. One through Indiana Online Academy and one through our ed mentum program. And then we will offer up again, summer ag as an option for students. And again, as part of summer school reimbursement requirements, we have to have at least fifteen students to make those courses, courses go. Usually, we do a pretty good job of filling those up, but there have been times when we've had to not be able to offer something because of the numbers, so.
All right. I get a recommendation for that summer school offering.
I want a motion to accept this recommendation for twenty twenty-four secondary summer school offerings.
Second. Got a motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Recommendation to approve the revised twenty twenty-four school board meeting dates.
I want to talk about this a little bit. So moving forward, we would like to do more of these during January. It was actually brought up, and I know Mr. Bowman mentioned this. In the past, your term for school board used to start July one. And then that's when we used to always do, like in the summertime, we would figure out what the school board meetings would be for the following year. But it's been many, many years now that we've started January, January one. So we have our reorganization meeting in January, we have our finance meeting in January. So from now on, we would like to have the meetings discussed in that reorganization meeting in January. And then go ahead and plan for the whole year, including the following January because then you would wait to see if there's any changes in the leadership. And so all this is, is just basically going for, more for the calendar year, going through all of twenty twenty-four, and then setting the two dates in January of twenty twenty-five. And then if there weren't any changes, we can look at that then too. So you can see, and I'll just go through here quickly, January, there's two meetings, February two. March, there would be the two, April only one, May one, June one, July two, we're starting up school again. August two, September two, October and November and December only one. And so that's typically what we've done in the other years, except one thing, we decided we would go with just one in May. If ever we need to add another one, we can. But this gives us some flexibility, all, everybody a little bit of flexibility. A lot of those that are just a one month is because of, you know, different holidays and different things like that, different things that you guys have done and will be doing. So anyway, just recommend that these be approved for, obviously, we're already through the first three on that. But we've already had those, but all the way through January of twenty twenty-five.
All right. Get a motion for that change, revised schedule.
I'll move to approve. So.
All right, motion in a second to approve the revised twenty twenty-four school board meeting dates. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Recommendation to approve the extended overnight camping trip for Sharp Creek Elementary sixth grade to Silver Lake, May fifteenth through the seventeenth.
So. Second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. And then we'll take the last on the recommendation to approve the extended overnight out-of-state senior class trip for Southwood High School to Pigeonport, Tennessee, April fourteenth through the seventeenth of twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Any unfinished business? Board policy? Any public comment? Mr. Stoffer. You got the board, all new.
Since you just mentioned him, and this wasn't on our recommendations, but two things that happened over this past weekend, I don't think it was on the recommendations that anybody put, but as you knew that, know that Northfield actually won the sectional, girls' basketball sectional, went to regional. Was not successful there, but they made it to there, which is great. And then also, Mr. Stoffer, first-year wrestling coach at Southwood. He had two gentlemen that made it to regional. And then they actually, both of those moved on to semi-state. And so they both wrestled in semi-state of Fort Wayne last Saturday. So congratulations, Coach Stoffer. Actually, a huge increase from about two-hundred percent increase from last year to this year as far as how many went to regional. And then even, I don't know if you double that again to go up to semi-state or not, but. So we were debating about what would happen next year, but I think he might be still in for next year. So I think the recommendation probably be, so that's not official yet because we have to wait till. Anyway, congratulations to him.
Any items for board members? All right, adjourned.